It's PM at March 16th and at Oak Ridge City Hall, City Council Regular Session. First order of business is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, on the ground, in the Capitol.
Could you call for a vote please?
Councillor Hooker?
Yeah.
Councillor Hooker? It's on. Councillor Charman?
Here.
Mayor Ketchum?
Here.
Councillor Kenyon?
Here.
Councillor Bjarnsen?
Here.
Councillor Hollitt?
Here.
Councillor Hooker, can you hear us? Visual on that, that's fine. Alright, next order of business is additions, corrections, adjustments to the agenda. Anyone on the City Council have any changes? Councillor Kenyon?
Well, I have a question. I see that we have something for executive session, but I don't see that it was noticed. Was it noticed?
So I noticed in the agenda that it was an executive session. The ORS, I got to put on until yesterday, the actual ORS, so.
No, I mean like the public side?
Yeah, the agenda went out a week ago, noting that will be, that part will be an exact office session.
Oh, thank you. I did not see that.
Yeah, other changes or questions on the agenda? Apple, we are going to swap 9.3 and 9.4. We have a guest here, help with the union deliberations, and I'll get in as soon as I can, Jim. Alright, you can see it. Addition, sort of on your new agenda, but 15.3, this obviously did not, this obviously did not make it, so we're postponing that. Now we're at public comment. I'll go to the Zoom platform first, does anyone on Zoom would like to speak? Is anyone?
Michelle Emmons would like to speak.
Okay, Ms. Emmens, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors. My name is Michelle Emmons. My address is 76707 High Prairie Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon 97463. Tonight, I'm speaking as President and on behalf of the Oak Ridge-Westford Chamber of Commerce, and we would like to recommend the council's approval for amendments to the ODAC Resolution 032023 to open committee membership to residents outside the Oak Ridge city limits up to two members, as has been allowed in the past. We believe that, excuse me, as has been allowed in the past, limiting membership to zip codes within the range of 97463 to 97462. The chamber feels strongly that the economic health of Oak Ridge proper relies as much on the strength of its greater area resources to feed the businesses located in the heart of the city as much as surrounding businesses rely on this heartbeat to keep our economy alive, robust, and open for growth. As such, we believe it is in the best interests of both Oak Ridge and Westford to work together with all local community members to research and identify new opportunities, connect to regional resources and initiatives, and help us stay in tune with important trends and shifts affecting businesses in our area. We also feel that limiting participation to people who only live within city limits creates an overwhelming burden for a small pool of people who have the time, energy, and privilege to actively participate. Expanding committee membership to include a wider range of participants from around the surrounding area will help keep the committee's scope of work fresh and better able to respond to emerging opportunities. I also want to thank councillors Kenyon and Hollitt for their work in helping the chamber identify opportunities to better serve our community, and I look forward to working on the ODAC committee. Taking my hat off, I'm sorry, do I still have a minute?
You have another yes, ma'am.
I'm taking my hat off from the chamber and just putting on my personal hat. I just want to say that I hope that Mayor and council will consider appointing an ODAC council representative that can help bridge the gap between the work that has already transpired on the committee and helps to connect the successes of that work to provide a foundation for the current efforts to revive the direction and purpose of the new committee. Thank you for allowing me to participate in tonight's public comment.
Thanks, Ms. Emmens, and thanks for all the work you do on the Chamber of Commerce. I know it's a lot of work and it's going very well. Thank you. Any other Zoom comments? Go to the floor, if you're going to speak, it's a public comment, please stand at the podium because the audio is much better if you stand up here and also get attention. Ms. Emmens?
Hello, my name is Street Hammond, 76349, Long Island Way, and I'm asking number 27 in the council package is a proposal plus properties list, and my question is, we already, it's commercial use category 48372, Commercial Street, the lot number is there. When, has there been animals housed in that building and can citizens have a vote to whether it is sold or is renovated to operate as cattery? Would there have been prior regulations made for that, to be specific? The cattery, we definitely have the volunteers for it. Our community is just powered by feral pet colonies, and there's two feral pet, tap release programs that could absolutely utilize that building, and partnership with, with the town, as well. I thank you for your time, and I hope that we can save that building as opposed to selling it and doing the cattery as intended. Thank you.
Thank you. CA, can you, if you know the history of that building, and I do know that any public property that's sold has to go through a public hearing before it is sold, so there's an opportunity to get that. Anyone else from the floor, like to speak, public comment? Okay. Next up is Mayor Comments and Announcements Proclamations. I've got a couple things. I'd like to respond to council concern last meeting about speaking, members of the public speaking outside of designated public comment times on the agenda. Essentially, they wanted citations, so first citation would be this book which we all have on page 74 and 100, recommended as by a line of public comment or questions during council discussion of its own agenda items. Second, while it's not specifically stated, it's implied in Chapter 5, Section 2 of the Council Rules Procedure, refers to the conduct of members, in this case councillors, during debate. There's no member, no mention of non-member participating in the debate. Lastly, it's specifically stated in the Robert Tools of Order on pages 26 and 249 of this edition here. So I consider, you know, city council meetings, regular session meetings, business meetings, town halls or public hearings, and the public's given time to comment on those items on the agenda and not on the agenda. If the reason a councillor desires to speak in public to gain information about an agenda item, the query should be to the staff, not to the public. However, since I know the council desires the public be allowed to speak in some cases outside public comment to provide information on an issue, here's what I propose, while maintaining, not violating the Robert Tools of Order, and that is, a citizen can arrange ahead of time with the city administrator to speak their three minutes of public comment during the agenda item if the comment has remained to the agenda. If at the meeting, a councillor would like to hear from a citizen, they can make a motion so stating, if it receives a second and passes with a majority, citizen may speak for three minutes if it remains on topic. I will attempt to apply this guidance evenly and consistently as we go forward.
Mayor, may I ask a question on that? When an agenda item is specifically about a business or a local citizen, can we schedule ahead of time to allow them to have time?
And I think the city administrator does that in most cases, like for instance Ricky Arper is here today because he's got a license pending, and I think it's proper that if their council asks questions of them, that they allow, but they need to make sure that the city administrator does it ahead of time instead of just, so even if it's going to happen, so he can explain to them the limitations. That makes sense?
Sort of. I'll see how it goes.
Alright, moving on, number seven, which is council comments and announcements. Any councillor have anything?
I want to leave on your desk, but you know it to James, he's one of us. Yeah, business retention and expansion report, and also email it to Michelle Emmons, President of the Chambers. Councillor Kenyon and I are working with her on some partnering with the Chambers, and this is a project I'd like the council to really look through, see what they think about it. I've had in detail conversations with Robert Phil and also Cole, I forgot his last name, but he's the Economic Director of the City of Amida, and they've put together a really intense survey to both the businesses, the current businesses and potential businesses and citizens there, and this is something that we could really pull together, future businesses and current businesses, and help the city work with them a little bit. So I'm hoping that councillors can look at this time, I think, and then hopefully we can work on this council project, and then forward it on to ODAC, which is a tool for both chambers, and I see.
Thank you. What else? What else? Councillor Johnson or Councillor Hooker, anything?
Nothing for me.
Alright, moving on to number eight, which is the consent agenda. I hear a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second you, go.
Seconded by Councillor Kenyon, seconded by Councillor Hooker, consent agenda. Can we call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum?
Yes.
Councillor Bjarnsen?
Aye.
Councillor Charman?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
I believe she's still having audio troubles. She can't.
She can't hear.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. A business from the City Council is next, and 9.1, and that's the Middleport Bistro OLCC liquor license application. James, can I introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor. Alright, Mr. Ricky Arper, he's back here, has petitioned the OLCC for his own liquor license at the Middleport Bistro, located right across the street. If people aren't familiar, he's been using a liquor license last couple of years that he shared with the pub next door. He's announced he'd like his own liquor license rather than sharing one, and needs council's approval to do so.
Right, any questions? Hear a motion?
I would just allow the CA to sign the Middleport Bistro OLCC liquor license application, recommending that the OLCC.
Second.
Anybody by Councillor Charman, seconded by Councillor Hollitt, discussion, Councillor Kenyon, anything? Hooker? Councillor Johnson, anything?
No.
Alright, can you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Charman?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Bjarnsen?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Great, motion passed.
Congratulations.
Alright, moving on to 9.2, and we have a guest speaker here. James, introduce.
Yes, we've got Andy Clive here, with Saint Vincent Paul. He's going to explain a program that's been around for quite a while, 2006, I think?
2001?
2001, okay, and earlier, that Oak Ridge has been a part of it. Well, I don't steal the thunder off, I'll let you explain.
James.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors. Appreciate you letting me come to sit and visit. So James is saying, this program, which has been really well-issued, long-term, or the regional, which is a program of many types, and has been around over two decades now, and Oak Ridge is one of the founding members of that. And pretty much since COVID, we had a policy group we used to meet, which apparently were good businesses, and we haven't been that since COVID. So that's one of my purposes, and I think it's easy to project that we're looking to find some, buy participants, and like James mentioned in the packet, I mean, it can be an elected official, in the public, that can be also a member of the staff. Anyway, so like I said, we've been doing this program now for a fair few decades. I'm managing it now, I've been involved in programs just beginning, and generally what it is, it includes two, well, moderate campus home works, and one in our private homes, and the land, and that's critical, right, because, right, a lot of people will call and ask, I need repairs done on my mobile home. It's an apartment, personally, a program that's not structured, village, so, real estate, you're going to have to take out. But that said, there's still usually quite a bit of need in communities that we serve, which are all small communities throughout, including Lincoln Heights itself, so, anything that's outside of urban road boundaries or outside of the city limits, Eugene, Springfield, that's our program territory. But anyway, these loans that we make to folks, they're payment deferred, which means there's no monthly payments, so it's really kind of an equity position that we take in the property. Loans are paid off typically when the house gets sold, and so it helps, helps folks who are in that category, it's repairs and rest for the first time in the house, and they don't have to worry about making payments. They sell the house. Sometimes there's a refinance, that's another, another trigger. But generally speaking, as long as they're living in the house, these loans are made for, we charge interest at 3%, but we only do that for the first seven years. So the loan actually grows for the first seven years, and after that, it just stops. If you're able to run that video, we can give you kind of an understanding of what each program, a little understanding as well.
Sorry, we're also involved on my ear to keep it active. Hi, I'm Mary. I want to talk about the loan I got, it's an ongoing, I got some home improvements that were done on my place, painting, outside painting, and got some new floors, and these may go, before I decided to nail windows and, you know, be done, maybe it's not me so much, but it was great having that, it's one of the minutes or so long. This is part of the new windows, too, the sliding glass door, and they're open and wide before, was just crazy and hard to pull open it now, it's just like, yeah. I love it, I love this, the removal of the floor, another thing that, and, yeah, I didn't want to, or that damage here, and, you know, touch your foot on that trip, and then the program was for safety, and there are repairs, it wasn't just remodeling or anything like that, it was for safety things, and that was great, to have the floor repaired and then have it extended out, and, I think, like, so I got a heap of, the darkness, um, was actually, and.
It does, actually.
And, but it keeps, it's very, it's very, it's actually caught, I mean, that's already, he caught a little, I don't know, swall in there, something, that had the darkness, that I, it's, we need to check on that, and that's great, and Mary caught, yeah, and, I mean, very, very efficient to, and all that, it's just the whole thing, just actually helped myself, being actually, is a main why, you know, you have better home, you know, that you come for Christmas, and it's, it was nice, but.
Okay, thanks for running that. So, there's lots of kinds of repairs you can do, and I think Mary, and the thing, you know, stress that it is, not just, you know, during cosmetic stuff, which is a very low priority, you know, the primary role of the program is to alleviate and help state gain structural issues as well. So, you know, flooring is usually not something, but if there's a hole in the floor, then we got to share on the floor, it's a, it's a repair. So the same incident, Paul, we manage two components of that program. One is what we call the revolving loan fund, and so these loans are made throughout the years, with grants that were, you know, obtained by, including Oak Ridge, and when these loans get paid back, we turn around and do the same thing, so we just keep on revolving it. And then our other, our other aspect is working with cities to require new grants, and years past, it used to be through organ housing, now it's through business funding. It's pretty much the same, however, in the past, it used to be that, way, way in the past, it used to be that cities actually managed the program themselves. They changed that so that nonprofit would administer it for consortium reasons, so that's what we're doing. Anyway, you know, like I said, the onset of the program, you know, we're looking for participants, you know, in our policy committee. We are hoping to be working on a new grant, hoping the grants are due in September, but we need to get started on them early on, because there's a lot of assessment work, and we need to do. So that's, that's one of the things we're looking for, and just, I want you guys to know about our program, because it's really been quite a few years, I think, since, you know, I've worked with anyone personally, and Oak Ridge has been a lot of people have been involved in the program, but I'd like to get some more participation. So I'm hoping within the next month, we'll have a policy meeting. There are several other communities who've shown some interest in making a grant. We don't really have an indoctrinated criteria for how we choose which community. It has been, you know, we were bringing a new candidate by, all the, pretty much all the small communities are members now. So it's basically about need and sort of on the rotation, you know, who has had a, had a grant, well, Oak Ridge is just one of those communities. Over time, we've served well over 200 households throughout the, throughout the area. The impact, you know, when I look at it, it looks small, because our loans are only $25,000, $35,000. That's been a loan for quite some time. We haven't adjusted it to try to serve more people. The grants are up to $400,000, about a quarter of that, as of when it's administered in the program. So, you know, we can serve, you know, a dozen more houses, and then in one jurisdiction. The way it's set up now is, because we're a consortium around Anne County, technically, the lead jurisdiction can apply, but funds can be available to outside of it. However, we both set our marketing to help target, direct it more towards members that have the jurisdiction, but if, you know, if we're having trouble spying applicants, we want to, anyway, Ms. Emmens, have any questions? Any council have questions?
That's a good.
Has, has Oak Ridge already been designated as the lead jurisdiction? Is that something's coming?
That's, that's something that we're lucky to find out. So there's been, there's one, two, there's three that I'm actually stretched for, you know, an interest in applying, I know what's kind of thinking. And so that's what, what I want to try to accomplish in our next policy meetings, and talk about that, decide, how, who want to go about this, and who wants to take the lead. And again, like I say, you know, even if Oak Ridge or some other community takes the lead, residents in other communities can still benefit.
Okay. So my understanding, I think, talking to you, is that we were allowed two members on the policy?
Yes.
And one of those members typically is a public official?
Yeah, ti- ti- you know, historically, you know, we've had somebody who's on staff and/or an elected official. So, and then, you know, or you can appoint, you know, a, you know, a person from the, the public.
But typically, one's an elected official.
That's, that's what I, what I know. Yeah, now and then there are, there are unfortunate public officials as well.
And I forgot to mention that in my intro, that that is an option for council tonight, is to point someone to this policy committee. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions ready?
I had a couple. So is Saint Vincent's carrying the note, or is there an underlying bank or something that does that?
So we, we hold the note.
Yes, it is a 3% standard and index, do anything?
It is not indexed, it stays. Yeah, so the actual annual percentage rate, you know, there's technically, there's a 20-year term, so that calculated APR, even after that time, which is key extending, APR is at 1.14, I would expect.
And Saint Vincent's conducted the oversight after you award the, the loan?
Yes, so, you know, once, once we've approved the loan, and we have a, we have a loan committee that, that works with that set, for reviews of loans, once the loan is approved, then we will, we'll issue the scope of work. Homeowners have small round bids, and then we manage the disbursements, and we'll show up from time to time and take a look at the work, and we'll be there to, I hope if there's a dispute, try to hire things up, because I'm a contractor as well.
Is there anyone in council that wants to volunteer on this committee? Councillor Johnson?
At this time, no, thank you.
Yeah, I wonder what, sorry, I just wonder what the time commitment is on.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty not very much. So, you know, for the last couple of years, it's been me sending an email that you can read in five minutes. And, you know, years, when we first started the thing, there was a lot of policy to catch out, and we would have, we would get together once a report. Now, it's, if we get together, any, any rule I want to be here.
Alright, next, someone want to make a motion to?
I would like to appoint Councillor Charman.
It is the rehabilitation, a regional housing rehabilitation loan firm. Yeah?
Regional?
I can say that.
On the one that I published, this is RHP, so.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion or questions, or any? Can we call for a vote, please? Do you have a question? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I do have one question. So the second person, are we allowed to, do we appoint, or do we ask?
I guess it'd be nice to have, maybe have a citizen that wants to, you know, kind of varied input, and I don't, I think maybe the CA can ask for volunteers. I guess it'd be nice to have, maybe have a citizen that wants to, you know, kind of varied input, and I don't, you know, I think maybe the CA can ask for volunteers.
Right, but I suppose if we, yeah, I'm happy to put out an ask. I don't get anyone to extend, there'd be.
Probably this country's candidates, yeah.
Definitely.
Good. Okay.
Councillor Tomlin?
Aye.
Mayor Kutchin?
Aye.
Councillor Hooker?
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Very good.
Yeah, you're a freshman from some other ridge.
Good old James, get you on my email. All right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're, we've switched the order here, so now we're on to new union contracts. Uh, and be aware that there will be an executive session as part of this agenda item, so it's going to be a little cumbersome. Everyone's going to have to kind of vacate the room and then come back. Sorry about that.
I wonder if it would, um, be feasible for the council just to go to the back room and do executive session?
Good idea.
We could. Technology's not set up back there yet, but, um.
Oh, I thought we had.
Well, no, but it's not on.
Oh.
So we can do it.
Take notes. Someone can take notes, right, Jack?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's all we need, because I'm going to have to take them. Yeah, that's a great idea. So everybody can stay seated and, it's nice to work. But, uh, first, well, we have to see. Do you want to do that now?
We can do that. We, we will need to start Zoom in the back rooms, right? Um, so what, we, we, we could close Zoom now. Restart it back there.
Oh, but there's councilors on.
That's why I'm, that's why we'll have to restart it back there to let councilors in. I, I, I mean, I think that's doable.
I do, too.
Yeah, just so everyone online understands, we're going to be shutting down Zoom. You can apply to get back in, in ten minutes or so. You may be in the waiting room for as long as we need to finish the executive session, but when that's done, council will come back and let everybody in.
Ready to go? All right, so one second before we do. Verbiage. Uh, see, we're moving into executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two. The conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry out labor negotiations. We will return.